The School Board for School District 624, White Bear Lake, here at our schools. Come to order with the clerk read the poll.
Beloit, here. Chapman?
Here.
Allison?
Here.
Fahey, here. Mullen, absent. Newmaster?
Here.
And Wilson?
Here.
Okay.
All right. First up on the agenda, I guess, is the college readiness update. And Ms. Paul, I will turn it over to you.
All right, Director Chapman, Dr. Lovett, Ms. Rindstedt, members of the board. We are very excited to be here to have a follow-up to our presentation we had regarding our career pathway work, to talk about our broader college readiness work. And Jill Pearson and Dr. Allison Gillespie really are going to be the main presenters for you tonight at this work-study session. And then we have student perspective and a teacher perspective here to also, teacher perspectives to share some of that broader work. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jill Pearson.
Okay, thank you, Chair Chapman and members of the board. Last month, you were updated, as Ms. Paul said, about the career pathways. So you've seen this framework before. We talk about the metaphor of our bridge, our goal of accelerating the path for students to college and careers. So you heard extensively about some of the pillars on that bridge. Tonight, we're specifically going to be talking about college credit, as that is key in our design for students meeting the milestone of being college and career-ready. At our high school, we offer a number of options that enable students to earn credit for college. AP, Advanced Placement, is something that we offer many options in across different subject areas. Project Lead the Way is a curriculum we offer even down into the middle school as well, with options for credit in high school. And then the third bucket of options is under an umbrella we call concurrent enrollment, or you'll see dual enrollment is another term that is used nationwide. In that option, students are able to take the classes at the high school taught by a high school instructor, but actually earning college through an institution such as the University of Minnesota. They use the CIS term, College in the Schools. So does Minnesota State University Mankato. And then Century College is a newer partnership that the district has forged that gives students that option to take those classes in our, at our campus for those college credits. In addition, we'd like to share that we think all of our students can access these classes, but we also want to be mindful that a large number of students nationwide are showing up to college campuses and needing to take remedial coursework. That's costing them extra money. It's delaying sometimes the attainment of their degree. So we are working to ensure that our students are ready to get the college-level classes when they enter those institutions. So we offer two classes in partnership with Century, Algebra III and Language Arts 12, which embed strategies for college and career reading, so that students who successfully complete those assignments that are at the college developmental level are able to get a pass on the Accuplacer assessment and therefore would not need to take the remedial coursework in reading or math. So we consider those gateway to college-level courses. Why should we be focusing our energy on these college-level courses in high school? We know it's an ambitious stretch for some of our students, but there's a very good reason that we want to push them to take these options and stretch themselves. Research around dual enrollment has shown that students who take these courses are more likely to stay enrolled in post-secondary two years after high school. They statistically have a higher GPA once they're in those institutions, and they also have earned more credits three years after high school than their peers who did not take those classes. We also are partnered with Greater Twin Cities United Way, and they are a key partner in our design at the high school. And they partner with Jobs for the Future and the Graduate School of Education at Harvard. And they specifically encourage us to design around 12 credits for high school options, for high school students. So if students have the opportunity to generally, that would be taking three of these classes and earn those credits by the time that they graduate, they have really good momentum toward that first year of 20 or so credits. So we have worked hard to ensure that it's not just one specific department or, you know, one type of student, but that all of our students could successfully complete these credits by the time that they graduate. So at a glance, we offer a really robust platter of options from AP, as we talked about, 19 courses, 18 College in the Schools courses, four Century in the high school courses, and four Project Lead the Way. And behind all those classes are really talented instructors at our schools who are able to deliver that college-level curriculum, and you're going to hear from two of those instructors here this evening. Who is taking these courses? We have worked hard to design around the experience not just being for 11th and 12th grade, but that students, if they can start even as early as ninth grade, they'll gain confidence and perhaps change the trajectory of their high school career and plan for more of these classes when they realize they can be successful. So in this school year, we have 35% of our ninth-grade student body taking one of these classes, 23.5% of our 10th grade, and then you'll see that climbing up to our seniors, where we have 2/3 of them who are taking a class that is college-level. Specifically looking at our senior class at South Campus, 78% of those students will have taken at least one college-level course by the time that they graduate. And 38% of those students are on track to earn that 12-credit threshold that is really great momentum for completing that first year of college. In addition, we'd like to mention that the ALC has an exciting partnership that is new this year. It was approved last spring, so some of you will remember perhaps us updating you on this. They were approved through the Department of Education to partner with Century College and offer what's called a middle college option. So the students are enrolled at the ALC, and they're able to even extend their time there if they would like, and are on a path to earn a certificate in a program like welding or medical office support. So again, they're getting those credits free of charge to them. They're also getting additional counselor support at Century College while also having the benefit of the additional supports our ALC provides those students to. Gretchen Harriman was not able to be here tonight, the principal for the ALC, but she was really excited to share that one of the students who's enrolled in this coursework was offered a one-year scholarship at Century next year. So she will have a full ride and is really looking forward to that amazing opportunity.
So as we look at creating all these opportunities, we've also been really intentional at making sure that our students that are in these classes represent our demographics across our student body, and really look at closing opportunity gaps that we may or may not have in certain areas with our students. And in that, in those opportunity gaps, we often think of our students of color or low economic status students, but we also are looking at increasing opportunities for our female students in areas especially in IT where there's an underrepresentation in the workforce. As we look at that, we've collected a lot of data, and the next slide will explain the exact process that we go through, but our benchmark is that 65.6% of all of our students. So the benchmark group would be our white, middle-to-high-income students, and then we look at closing gaps between all different groups of students. We have narrowed gaps with our white and low-income students, our two-or-more-race students, and our black and African-American students. And we continually work, so this effort is continuous across our schools. So as we increase opportunities for all students, those gaps, well inevitably, that benchmark raises a little bit, so then our gaps, we have to adjust. So it's a continuous process that we've been committed to for many years, and we've made significant progress and are really proud of that progress that we've made. The way that we do this is we partner with an organization that really helps us collect a lot of data from students, staff, really looking at what have been the barriers for our students in enrolling those classes, and having staff identify students who may or may not have been in those classes yet, and helping them really see that we have expectations and support and really can see that they can take these opportunities. So our students fill out a survey as well as the staff, and then along with that, you'll see on this slide has what's called an insight card. And so each student in our school entering grades 10 through 12 have an insight card, and on that card, a trusted adult is identified. And through that process, we let the trusted adult know that they were identified by the students, and then had them work with that student to help them find opportunities that they were interested in. So really, it's an exciting opportunity for kids to get more time to talk with this trusted adult, but the impact it has on our staff to know that you were identified by a student as a trusted adult has also had a really powerful impact on us. Along that, Mr. Bosch, principal at South Campus, and I also held parent informational meetings with parents of students who are identified through this process, letting them know just all the different opportunities that are out there for them, and that we see that their students can strive even further than what they're doing right now, and that we're going to provide the supports for them, because inevitably, that is a question that comes when students are taking their next challenging step. Those supports include tutoring and support during the school day. We have, we're working on some summer opportunities for students partnering with their teachers to make sure that students are successful when they take that next leap, whatever it might be for them. So as we look at 2018, 19, and beyond, we're really looking at increased opportunities for students, especially at North Campus. Next year, our 10th-grade students have an opportunity to take AP Psychology, which will increase those numbers that you saw on the slide previous, and we have Introduction to Health Careers at both campuses. That partners with our increased development around that healthcare pathway. So we have healthcare construction and manufacturing. We're really focusing on strengthening those pathways next year. Healthcare has Intro to Health Careers at both North and South Campus, and then CNA classes at South Campus. And then we're working diligently with St. Paul College to, we redesigned our two construction courses and partnered with them to look for college credit opportunities for students as well. We're working on that with our manufacturing partnership. And then finally, we're really looking at expanding that same work that we did with our entering 10th, 11th, and 12th graders to our entering 9th graders for next year so that we can more quickly identify how we can support students into knowing all the different opportunities they have in those four years, and how we can help them take advantage of those.
So at this point, I would like to bring forward two instructors and three students. So we have Susan Fertney, who teaches at both North and South Campus, and she is new this year. We're really lucky to have her. She also teaches at the second, post-secondary level, has taught at Concordia University and University of Maryland. And Brietta Hudson is one of our curriculum leaders in math representative, and her department, she'll tell you more about the classes that they offer. And after they speak, then we'll hear from the students about what their experience has been like. So I'll start with Ms. Fertney. Could you share what you teach and what value you're seeing in these opportunities for students?
Well, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I wonder if I could start by thanking you for your service, for being on this board, because I feel that I'm very, very impressed with this district. I've been involved with several districts, obviously, well, not obviously, but I'm a parent, so with children in another district, but I appreciate what you're doing, and particularly that you're interested in what we're doing in the trenches, so to speak, and I think that's great, so thank you very much. So I teach IT explorations. I did the, in the fall quarter, excuse me, semester at North, which I believe is becoming, being computer savvy is almost now general knowledge, that every, whatever field our students go into, they're going to need to be savvy. So I'd like to see a lot of students from North, in fact, even all of them one day, being involved in a class like this. And at the moment, second semester, I'm teaching programming fundamentals, and they're learning the Python programming language. And so I'm doing one class at North, and then I go to South for a second class. And so I was lucky enough that I was teaching Python for two universities and colleges and in the high school at the same time. So it was an interesting experience, but I wonder if I could share some of the things I asked the students today without any prompting, right, no consequences, whatever they said, how they felt about college credit and being involved in this program. And many of them obviously know about the money, the financial situation, and what a great advantage it is to have some college credit for, without having to pay any money. They also see the advantage of starting college with credits, that that can, there are all sorts of advantages that they may, because they've done, taken these classes, maybe they could study abroad, maybe they could add another major, maybe they could add another minor, because they've already started, and maybe they can get in some classes that are difficult to get into because they already have credits, which allows you to register earlier at a lot of colleges, even qualify for scholarships. And these are the students' words, right, not mine. Interesting comment from one student that said she appreciated being able to earn college credit from a classroom experience rather than from an AP test score, which was very interesting. I hadn't thought of that, so a very sort of consistent effort of showing up to class. Several students mentioned how happy they were to be given a higher-level content, subject matter content, which I thought was, I was happy to hear that. Another thing I thought was important was that they talked about the fact that they understood that it was a higher level, but they appreciated the friendlier, they said, environment, although college isn't that bad, right? But anyway, they appreciated sort of familiar, friendly sort of environment that they were approaching the subject. So if I could just throw in a few of my thoughts as well. One thing I feel is that it's like going back to the bridge, that we're sort of giving them a guided path, sort of gently moving them towards the college academic environment. If I could use the analogy of the bowling alley and the bumper guards, that we're a little bit of the bumper guards, right? We're providing the same content, same assignments as for the college classes that I was teaching, but the difference is that it's like helping them apply the knowledge. The, I, I don't know, I'm sure you remember from your college days, didn't you have to sit to people lecturing about theory for an hour or so, and then they said, "Well, your assignment's due in two weeks," and that, right? But whereas I won't talk for too long, 10 or 15 minutes, and then they're opening up their Chromebooks, hopefully they're opening up while I'm talking, but, and then they start programming, and I'm right there to help them rather than just being sent off and them really having to seek help. So I see it as a tremendous advantage in, perhaps it's like a trial run or a smooth transition into college work. And they learn time management, which, as you know, is terribly important in college. We did a 20% project in the IT exploration so that we had some, you know, they had to have some deadlines as they went along, but a longer-term project, I thought, was a really good thing for them. But anyway, I'm talking too long, not unlike the gentleman at the royal wedding, so please forgive me. But I couldn't be happier to be here, being involved, and there's tremendous amount of support here, and everybody's doing a fantastic job, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fertney. I'll turn it over to Brietta Hudson.
I'm from the math department. One thing is, I'm an '05 graduate of White Bear, and when I was here, 30 kids took AP Calculus. I took AP Calculus from Bryan Morse back there. So that, we had 30 kids that took AP Calc. That was it. That's all that the math department offered. It was the top 30 kids, right, 5% of the class. I think last Tuesday, we had 200-some kids sitting at Jimmy's conference room taking AP Calculus of some sort, anywhere from sophomores to seniors. So just our top course, we've increased a ton, it's just the amount of kids there. But then, like Jill was saying, we have our college enrollment with Century, so kids that would have to go to Century and pay to take math and not get credit, we are allowing them to take that at South so they can go and start getting credit right when they enter Century. And then we have a couple courses then in for the middle, so it's kind of like the top and end, but then we have middle kids. CIS has an entry point, so it's for kids that aren't ready for, you're not the top 10% of the class, right? You're not that person in math, but we have entry point CIS for kids that just got it out of Algebra II. They're not super-strong math students, but they are going to go and get a Language Arts degree. They are going to go get an art degree. So we can offer them their college math class, and that's taken care of, and they can go off and be really successful somewhere and not have calculus or pre-calc holding them down. So we just have such a wide variety of classes. When I sit down with my juniors every year, I can pick out a college class for almost every single one of them. In the math department, every one of our tenure teachers at South Campus this year is teaching a college-bearing course this year. So it's, we offer so many options for almost every type of kid, which is, which is awesome.
All right. I'm going to invite the students up, and then we'll open it for questions for Dr. Gillespie, me, the teachers, and the students. So come on up. We are really lucky to have three of our busy seniors joining us this evening. So here we have Megan Gamrod, and she will be going to Carroll University in Wisconsin next year. And we have Kiana Duque, and she will be going to University of Minnesota. And we also have Yehaida Lansico. I'm doing okay on the pronunciation?
Lansico.
Lansico. Very French, so I was excited. And she'll be going to University of Minnesota as well. So they will be sharing what classes they have been taking and a little bit about their experience. So let's start with you, Megan.
Welcome. Appreciate you being here today. What are you working on? What you just said.
Well, thank you. Again, I'm Megan Gamrod, and through my four years of high school, I've taken 11 AP classes and one CIS class. So these have ranged from math and science to the history classes, so I've seen how each of these classes can help me improve my study skills. So AP Geography was my first class freshman year, so that was a semester, and that just taught me how to study, because before that, in middle school, I didn't have to worry about studying too much for tests, but this was the first class, and the big AP test at the end of that year was a big deal, and I studied for like three days out, which I thought was crazy, which now I know is nothing, but. So that was my first class, and since then, I took AP push, so AP US History, and that sophomore year was the hardest class I had taken up to that point. And that class taught me how to read a textbook. And I wasn't extremely interested in history, so it taught me how to read something I didn't always enjoy, and how to understand it too, and read it twice, and take notes, and just take hours on homework. So that taught me a lot of study skills and how to read a textbook. I took AP Calc AB and BC, and that class taught me not only the math and calc, but it taught me how to write and correct notation, which I'm going into a math career, so that'll be helpful to express my ideas in a way that's in the correct notation rather than just in my head or with the correct number, but like show the integral sign or something like that, and other stuff for stats too, and just make sure I'm writing it in the correct way. AP Physics have taught me that it's okay to fail tests, and that might actually be good. So 33% is still a three, so. So it taught me, all these AP classes have taught me I don't always need to get As on tests, and it's okay to miss problems because I learned from those mistakes. So I've missed a lot of questions, and each time, a lot of the classes have allowed me to correct my tests, whether it be for points back or just to help me learn, which has benefited me in the long run on the AP tests. So all these classes have taught me skills I've needed in school, especially study skills, and it helped, they helped me learn from my mistakes. I've been able to receive college credit, which will allow me to potentially graduate early, which will be awesome, and it'll save the costs of college. And that's about it.
Thank you, Megan.
So I'm Kiana Duque, and I've taken, I want to say it's seven college classes. So there's AP Comp, AP Art History, CIS Intro to Lit, that entry point, CIS Algebra Through Modeling, AP Studio Art, then CIS Advanced Sign Language, and then it was a photojournalism that had a connection with Century College. So those pretty much like gave me different types of challenges I was looking for, because I felt like I was, you know, a little bit ahead, but I was just kind of limited, because I was like, "Oh, like, they're college classes, they're scary." But really, once people started showing me them and I started taking them, they're not scary at all. Like, they really help you get a lot of in-depth, multi-class, applicable knowledge, applicable, I mean, my bad. And they also just allow me to see like what these college classes are going to be like and get like a smooth grounding into going into them. And it also, like Megan was saying, helps cut costs, helps make study skills, and it helps you with homework load, so then you know how to time manage that. And so that's, and then also like language-wise, for taking that Advanced Sign Language class, it really helped me see if that's a type of major I'm going to go into. I mean, not that I don't like ASL, but I'm going to go into Japanese, though. But, yeah.
Thank you, Kiana. Lastly, Yehaida.
Okay, so I'm Yehaida Lansico. I have not taken as many AP classes as these ladies here, but they were still very helpful. I took AP Composition, AP Literature this year, and then AP Statistics this year. So my first AP class was AP Comp, actually, junior year. I was actually very afraid of those kinds of classes. I was thinking, like Kiana said, like, "Oh, they're going to be so difficult," or "They're scary." But when I was in 10th grade, Mr. Kirkham actually was like, "Hey, like, you're doing really well in this class, and I think that you can challenge yourself even more." And I'm definitely someone who likes a challenge, so then I signed up for AP Comp, and I really benefited a lot from taking AP Composition. It was kind of my first look into what a college course would look like, and the atmosphere was very helpful too, because rather than, I don't know, sometimes I feel like, like I would take, I took Honors, History, because like I said, I was kind of afraid of taking AP push or those AP History classes. I always kind of felt like there wasn't, there's definitely a goal that I was working towards, but with an AP class, I feel like there are goals that I set every couple of weeks for myself. Like for AP Composition, it was, "Okay, so we have this in-class essay that we're going to take. I'm gonna, that's my goal. That's what I'm looking forward to doing this week, and I'm going to master that goal, and I got it, and then move on to next week." So I think the goal-setting definitely helped me develop a lot more as a student. So that helped a lot. And then now this year, I'm in AP Literature and AP Stat, so it's my first year taking multiple AP classes. And it is difficult, but it's definitely, like I said, I like a challenge, so it has helped me grow even more this year. So yeah, I took them because I wanted to challenge myself. Definitely the college credit too is going to help a lot. I'm not sure if I have enough to graduate very early, but still, it's definitely a good start, so I'm proud of that. And yeah, just the huge benefit is the independence too. I feel like you just grow a lot more in AP classes, because the people around you as well are also trying to get to that, that point, and you have a really positive environment, I feel, because everyone's kind of like, "Oh, we have this in-class essay today. Oh, we might all do bad. We're gonna do it together." So it's just a very positive environment in which a lot of people are able to grow. So, yeah.
Thank you so much, students. So with that, we'll open it up to questions for students or staff, and we're happy to answer.
Ms. Fahey, I think I saw you.
Do we, listening to the students speak, do we have these students speaking to other students? Because I can see a quick video with their comments that I could have used in middle school. I just, usually, when I hear about programs like this, it makes me want to go back and teach again. This makes me want to go back and redo my high school. So I would love something where the comments that these students at the board heard, that all the students in the district could hear it.
Thank you for that suggestion. This came up too with our Career Pathways Advisory Council. We last met in early May, and we had a student panel speaking to our community partners, and I'm just always blown away by our students. You guys knock the socks off those adults always. So thank you. And, and they too, but students were saying, you know, I, my only, you know, thing I really wish we could change about the program is I'd want to hear about this younger. So it was really good messaging. It wasn't surprising, but we were brainstorming ways that we could get the high school students to share with those 7th and 8th graders, because, you know, the adults do a really good job, but kids listen more from their peers.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, you were next.
Well, Megan, first of all, let me assure you from a scientific background that 90% of all hypotheses fail. Everyone hypothesizes in some way, shape, or form during their lives, and we always learn from those results, and that's how you move ahead. And. And that's how you move ahead, and find out which direction you need to probe to find the answer or solution that you're seeking. So yes, it's okay to take setbacks on exams for anybody. The other four questions that I had were for the faculty members. And I apologize, I didn't catch all your names, but Madam Professor, and this is strictly out of curiosity. All my questions are out of curiosity. What is the name of the starting computer program that students learn these days? And to put the frame of reference on it, when it was for me, it was BASIC.
Yeah, me too.
Really?
And then FORTRAN.
For you, yeah, okay.
Well, most, most colleges and universities are going to Python, as they changed it at the university. When I started, it was Scheme, now it's Python. And the same at Concordia where I'm teaching, we teach Python first. Is that, that was your question, which programming language?
And, and they learn that all through keyboarding? I mean, when I learned BASIC, I don't know about you, but I was flipping targets on the face of a mini-computer that was six feet high and two feet wide, and that's where actually addressing the core memory addresses by.
Well, yeah, I was lucky to start with the deck writer, if you're familiar with those. No screen, but the sprockets and the paper came up, and we had an acoustic coupler, which perhaps the students have never heard of. Picked up the telephone, dialed the number, and put it down, and you were connected to the server that was downtown or something like that, but. We don't.
That was it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Python, okay. Look into that a little bit. The next two questions are very direct, not for you. The college credits that are earned in the semester hours, I presume. Yes? Okay. And then if no one knows the answer, don't contact Gretchen. It's about the ALC clearly, 'cause I'm one of the liaisons to her school, and I'll just contact her directly myself. But when you mentioned extending the time for the ALC students that were in the career pathways, did you mean extending the length in years of their school program? In other words, perhaps allowing them to stay until they're 21, if they needed to?
Thank you. The middle college program is designed to allow that experience to extend so that it's really kind of overlapping the high school experience right into that two-year degree experience. And so it is allowing them to continue to access supports at their ALC school as well as access the college-level supports. So yes, it is allowing them to continue to access high school education as well as earning those credits to get the two-year degree while they're getting the support at the ALC.
But 21's still the cutoff, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. And the math question. You've heard my historical references already. I was used to saying, seeing Algebra I, Algebra II, Analytical Geometry slash Trigonometry, where you concentrated largely on proofs and functions and things of that sort, and then it was pre-calculus. What's Algebra III?
It's basically a course for kids that weren't ready to make the jump from an Algebra II course all the way up to pre-cal. So we created a course that was sort of a middle ground for kids that maybe struggled in Algebra II, got a C, didn't really feel like they were confident in skills, so we built a course in. Most high schools are doing it now, just to work on factoring and some of those skills that you really need to be successful in pre-cal, 'cause pre-cal is kind of a national set standard, so you need to get there, and so we wanted to make sure that we weren't sending kids into our pre-cal courses that were gonna fail.
So polynomial factoring largely, right?
Yes, yes. Tons of that.
Thank you. That was it.
Ms. Ellison?
Well, first I wanted to say that, students, you are extremely impressive. You do, you are a great credit to the district, and you're gonna do so well in college, just based on what you've said. So good luck to all three of you. And then I just have a real quick question, if it's for Ms. Pearson or Ms. Paul. How is it determined which courses are offered and which ones are added or taken away? For example, I see that AP Psychology's been added. What if AP Government is next, or, you know, what if one needs to be taken away? So how is that decided?
We have a really extensive process to add courses and also take them away. I'll just explain that AP Psychology example was actually something that teachers had brought forward as looking at their department, saying in social studies, this is something we're interested in adding, and we think that it could make our offerings more accessible to students at a younger age. The AP Geography that we offer and US World, US History just didn't seem like a fit for all of our kids. They, they weren't, you know, signing up in droves. And so some teachers attended training and said, you know, we hear that this is a class that kids are having success at, and it's kind of another gateway class. And offering it at a younger age then might open up opportunities for more classes. So that was a teacher department-driven option. We also have other ways that course proposals come forward. So it could be from Teaching and Learning Department, researching, you know, what, maybe there's a new AP class offering, and then we would consult with departments occasionally, and I wish it was more often, but we've actually had some course proposals come from students that they've heard from, you know, that this is a great option at another high school or another program that they would be interested in. So they come from a variety of places. Our career pathways, we consult with industry. So then we partner with our post-secondary institutions like Century and the University of Minnesota, and now St. Paul College, to see what is going to help us extend those pathway options. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Boy.
I have the, almost the exact same question, but I wanted to kinda drill down a little further into it. As I was looking through it, having kids that are going to be going to high school, I was looking at the different options in terms of if my child was going to go into the Arts and Sciences, or if my child was going to go into the business college. I was looking at what AP classes and what materials are there for them to do now in order to get the credit. Are those also taken into consideration? 'Cause as I was looking through the, the AP classes, there's a lot of basics, but they don't cover every single college within the universities. So how do we, how do we address that?
I wanna make sure I understand your question. So it's about the choices that students make, what particular college they're going to?
No, so if I'm going into Arts and Sciences, I'm not going to need a lot of math. I'll need the basic math, but I won't need a lot of math. But I will need the liberal education.
Okay, I see, okay.
Those types of things.
Right. So I think where we try to address that is with the student's post-secondary plan. So whether that's, like you heard last week, some of our students who want to enter the workforce, and so they're thinking about trade school, or those students who have designs on becoming a teacher, which thankfully, we have lots of students in this district too. So they work with their counselors and with their advisors on developing the plan for what they want to take, what they want to pursue after high school, and then would explore those options related to it. So their counselor might be the one to encourage them to, you know, make sure that you have, even though you're interested in liberal arts, you'll need a math requirement. So it would be a good idea to take AP Stat, so it might be the counselor suggesting it. But again, our faculty do a really good job of learning about the students' interests and during registration windows, telling them what the different options are and who those classes would be good for.
And then my second question was actually for, I'm sorry, the name escapes me, as Professor. As a female, one of the biggest things that we've seen is the lackluster joining of females into IT and taking those courses. How would you suggest that we encourage females to start planning on those types of careers and taking more of those types of courses?
Well, that is an excellent question, and, and we did have this meeting where we had some other students, and one student, a female student, was sharing how scared she was all summer about taking IT, 'cause she'd heard of all these, you know, so what was RAM, and that she was scared. So I feel, and I think it's been suggested, that we go to the middle school, you know, and talk to, I mean, obviously, the group as a whole, and find some way to have them not be concerned. I mean, it's like some people think IT is magic, right? Well, it's not. It's just zeros and ones. 'Cause I, I had only two, right now, in my programming class, I have two female students out of 30. So, you know, who, who are doing extremely well, and, but I, I feel you're, you know, and I hope it helps that I'm teaching the class, and that.
I personally, I think it starts really early, because boys like to game. I mean, they're the ones that are on Xbox, they're the ones that are playing all the games, and you just don't see females doing the same type of thing. But it, it introduces them to that type of thing early, where they're more interested, and I just, I'd love to find new ways to get females.
Yeah, and in middle school, I don't know if you have robotics and sort of clubs you do, and that we need to be talking, if we could communicate with, you know, and perhaps go, go to the middle school and, you know, take some computers apart and get their hands dirty, and then they'll say, oh, this is fun. This isn't so bad, right? I can do this.
We've also done lunch and learns this year at North Campus, where kids can sign up for industry partners that are coming in, and intentionally had females in technology come and be able to talk to kids about different opportunities. So even at the 9th grade level, if they haven't yet taken IT explorations or programming, they're at least starting to see that there are females or people of color, all different people, doing these jobs. 'Cause sometimes kids, they don't even know that it's a possibility for them. So that's one way that we've intentionally tried to do that at the 9th and 10th grade level this year.
How many show up to the lunch and learns typically?
It ranges, honestly, 'cause well, for IT, it was the biggest one. We probably had twenty-some kids each lunch, so that would've been closer to 80 kids, where we've had less luck having it with different other areas, so we keep working on it. But next year, we're really looking at how can we even expand it to more students? 'Cause kids won't always choose to leave lunch to go to these, so how can we use advisory and different structures to increase that opportunity for students?
Thank you. But we're really working harder now. I want you to know that, right? We'll keep going, 'cause.
Okay. Dr. Newmaster, this'll be, we need to move on a little bit, be the last question. I've got one of my own, but.
I am hopeful that we'll see more gender equity participation. Simply from looking at what's going on at ours, I see the kids all pushing and shoving to program their little Lego blocks. But I think some of the scary edges taken off already, you just haven't seen that moving up the grades. And I guess the other thing about the college and the schools, I commend White Bear for doing this for decades. 'Cause my kids who graduated in 93 and 97, all happily went off to River Falls and Eau Claire with 10 credits of college German from the U of M. It was very valuable, and they could register ahead of everybody else. And unfortunately for their mother, their world language teacher, they never had to take a language again. Sometimes kids are happy to knock off a general. And that's why I think some of what's offered is there, whether it's the math or a language. It's something you know you very likely will need. You can check that box. You're a bit ahead, and it's worth a lot of money if you have 10 credits in anything. And that was one of the very first, I was a world language person, and that was the first of the college in the school's classes at, at this school, I think. If you guys started covering them with COAL, we'll at least certain COAL. So we all had your language, I didn't have my language.
Now, to wrap up, I have just one question on my own. That is, I'm hearing more and more about app coding for mobile devices, phones, tablets, so on, so forth. Is there any, is that being or thought about being enmeshed into existing programs? Or are there, is there talk about having specific CIS AP programs that would deal with that? I know it was even a topic at the National School Boards Association Conference. I didn't attend that session, I wanted to, but, but a lot about that, that area.
So one really great thing about that IT explorations class is that it does kinda cover a lot of possible areas that students could get in deeper once they get to college. We are still considering where else to add courses in that IT pathway. Ms. Burtney was just suggesting, when we met last week, that she'd like to see a more advanced programming class for kids who go through that first level. And we have, we're considering additional AP options, so I think it'd be a high-interest area. So again, back to Ms. Ellison's question, a key stakeholder group we consult with would be students, 'cause they help determine the enrollment. So we could look at, explore that and see what the interest would be and how it aligns with the industry needs.
I'd love to teach that.
All right, well, thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for all the great work that's happening on the part of staff. This is awesome stuff. Thank you, students, for being with us tonight and for sharing your perspective. Thank you. And the next item up on the agenda is the CSOW at elementary, not a playground thing, the way it sounds. Mr. Garrison and company?
Oh, that's wrong. CSOW. Are you looking at the most updated one?
I think that was transliterated. This is, this is a script, small s.
Go ahead, Mr. Garrison.
Dr. Kazmercheck, Miss Renzett, members of the board. Before I even start on this, I just wanna echo what you said about the previous presentations. Really inspiring to see student agency so front and forward in our work here in White Bear Lake, and a lot of phenomenal takeaways from, I think, what both the staff and students said there. One thing that I'll take to heart is that idea of setting two-week goals of things we're always aspiring to, which seems like when, when I'm at my best is what I'm doing, and it's a good reminder to, to always strive for that. We wanna talk just briefly today about our digital communications in the district, and specifically how CSOW, which is a new tool we've been using this year, fits into, to that broader scheme. So just to give a little bit of background in terms of digital tools we use, we've got a student information system, which is Skyward. I assume you're all familiar with that. That's our basic platform for grades and attendance. It's how we report back to the state, it's how we get paid by the state, 'cause we tell them, here's the number of students we have and all that. We'll always have a student information system. That's a core functionality of a school district. Then we have a learning management system that's traditionally been Schoology, and we'll talk today about how CSOW is also fitting into that space. As another layer, we've got classroom management systems, and Google Classroom is the best example of that. And what those classroom management systems help to do is just make teachers' jobs more efficient. So they might make grading papers a little automized, or, you know, a little more automatic. They might make exchanging assignments a little bit easier for teachers and students. So that's the classroom management piece. We've got a single sign-on, which we talked about, I think, quite a bit last year, ClassLink, which provides a single portal for people to get to tools, and that's ClassLink. And then we've got email and all these other communication and collaboration tools out there. Our goal in looking at that whole suite of tools is always thinking about, how can we streamline and clarify the digital parent communication? And I wanna specify here the digital piece, because there's a lot of really essential parent communication that happens in the district that's face-to-face, or that happens during conferences, or over the phone, or that happens via paper. All of that is still essential. But what we're talking about here is if you're a parent and you wanna stay digitally connected to your teacher, what's the, what's the most efficient way for you to know how to do that? And then how can we look at our existing tools and new tools that we bring into the district to make sure that they're strengthening our strategic alignment? So with that kind of framework in mind, we started to look not at like, what's our learning management system and our student information system and all the things I introduced on that first slide, but really, if you're a parent in this district, what are the main digital communication hubs that you need to pay attention to? And after a lot of talking with teachers and with students and with principals, and with parents, actually, this is what we've settled on, that, that if you've got a 3rd grader in the district next year, CSOW is gonna be your tool. That's how you're gonna stay digitally connected with your teacher. If you've got a middle schooler or a high school student where you're checking grades a little more frequently, and you've got that, that kind of connection into Skyward, that's gonna be your main digital hub along with email for teachers. They email back and forth with the teachers. And then below that, you've got all those tools that teachers use in the classroom, Schoology and Google Classroom, and those other things that are really more about sharing assignments. And that brings us to CSOW. And I think when we roll out big new tools, or really when we make any kind of major decision in our department, we're looking at three basic things. The first thing is, does it move White Bear Lake area schools forward? Like, will we be better, will we do our work better having this thing than without it? And I think there are a lot of examples that these three will share with you about, how CSOW helps us. CSaw helps us do that, how it eases student portfolios, how it improves parent communication, how it helps us digitize and therefore save things over time. The second thing we look at is, does it lower hurdles for staff and students and parents? Like, does it make it easier for them to access information? And I would say if there's one selling point for CSaw as a platform, this is it. Parents have said to us over and over and over again, this is the easiest way for me to stay in touch with what's happening in my child's classroom. And the third piece for us is, is this something that our department can help to move into action? And I would just say that CSaw stands out to me in my time here in White Bear Lake as really being a platform that has come to us because of teacher enthusiasm first. And teachers have said to us, this works for me, I'm using it in my classroom every day, my colleagues are using it, how can you help us systematize this? And that's really what our work has been. So with that, as kind of an introduction, I want to turn it over to Nick Marty, to Owen Howard, and to Luanne Klubja, to just give you a brief overview about how this tool works and then open it up for questions.
About four years ago, we noticed that several teachers in White Bear were using a new app called CSaw. It has been teacher-driven from the very beginning, and they've always had amazing stories to tell us about it. CSaw documents student learning and it helps families connect. One of our elementary schools this year, from March first to April eighteenth, had, this is a real number, twenty thousand three hundred and fifteen family visits to CSaw. That's one of our elementary schools. This is in response to fifteen thousand posts. And those posts are by teachers, but a lot of them are by students. CSaw is easy to use. I observed a teacher introduce a lesson on how to use CSaw, show her students how to use it, and release them in a matter of fifteen minutes. And the students were helping each other and posting their journal that they had written that day on CSaw for their parents. It is easy for everyone to use. CSaw allows teachers to see exactly how many parents have read their posts and how soon they read the post. They can also use CSaw to collect data on student work, and it can be used as an assessment tool. Families receive posts through an app on their smartphone, but you can also check it on CSaw on a desktop or a laptop. CSaw reaches many families who might otherwise be unengaged because of its ease of use. It also translates into almost any language we would have in White Bear Lake. And now I'd like you to listen to a story that's not uncommon, but it's about a teacher's perspective on CSaw in his classroom. This is Mark Tyson, he's a first-grade teacher at Van Ness Heights Elementary, and I think he's the one who got me the most excited about CSaw because of how he uses it so well in his classroom.
And Mark wanted to be here tonight but couldn't, so he just asked if he could record his statement here. He's about ninety seconds, his talk here.
Hi, Mark Tyson, first-grade teacher at Van Ness Heights Elementary School. I've been working in White Bear Lake District since 2000. This year, I have seventeen amazing first graders. When it comes to communicating with families, it's a vital part of children's education, and CSaw's been a game changer with that. CSaw allows teachers to easily send out notes, videos, photos, documents for families to view. Students are able to do the same thing to show families digital projects that were more difficult to communicate before. On the parent end, it's really easy, they can load an app on their smartphone, they can go on a desktop computer to view all these different things. Teachers know that families are seeing the information, because it shows which families have viewed it. Last year, I had a family where the father worked long hours, he traveled a lot for business, yet he was on the same page with us, because on a regular basis, he could connect in through the CSaw app and see what his daughter was doing in class. When he showed up at conferences, he knew exactly where we were at and what we had done in the classroom. Another instance where CSaw came in really handy was, we were trying to get an IEP notice out to a family through email, yet struggling to get the response. When I let him know that the CSaw app was a way of communicating with the family that worked really well, we were able to get that IEP taken care of right away. CSaw's been a huge game changer in the way we communicate with families, and I only see it getting better.
Awesome. Hi, I'm Nick Marty, I teach fifth grade here in the district, and I'm also a digital learning specialist here. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the family perspective, some of the advantages from the parents. The feedback I've gotten, the biggest thing I've heard is just that it provides a window to our world. My parents at conferences and when I've talked to them have been kind of over the moon about the fact that they are watching the learning happening as it unfolds in our classroom. Some pretty cool moments, we're in the middle of a science lesson or a math lesson, and our children are posting, our students are posting, and all of a sudden their parents are communicating with them in class about what they are learning. And in order for that to happen, you know, the feedback loop to happen really, really quickly, is pretty powerful stuff. It's kind of an echo, it's been really easy. Over the years, I've tried lots of different things in my classroom to communicate with parents, and this has been by far the easiest thing to get them hooked up with and for them to use. There's apps, it delivers the information right to them. They really don't have to go search for it, because they get a notification, a lot of them, when something is posted. And it's the kids' learning, whether you're a first-grade student who's practicing counting from, you know, one to a hundred and twenty, and the parent can watch that happening, to our fifth graders who might be doing a science project and kind of posting during different points of that project, so you can see the learning and the development happening. It's pretty cool. And it becomes a kind of a collection of memories, it becomes a portfolio. We just, in our class, a couple of weeks ago, we're looking back at our fifth-grade memories, kind of creating that. And we could just go back to CSaw and look at everything we've done this year, and it was fun for, to see our students reminiscing about things that have, that have happened. And it kind of goes with us everywhere. And so from a parent's point of view, it really allows them to stay connected with what we're doing and see the actual learning that moves a little bit further than just an email or what their, you know, their child is talking about them. A lot of parents have also talked about how it becomes a conversation starter for them at home, instead of coming home and getting the typical fifth-grade boy response of, what did you do in school today? Oh, nothing, or stuff. You know, they can say, hey, on CSaw, we saw that this happened, tell me more, and then it starts kind of that conversation. So it's been a great addition to our classroom, and my parents have really enjoyed it. I'm going to turn it over to my main man, Owen here, he's a fifth grader in my class, and he'll give you a little bit of an idea of what it feels like to use CSaw as a student.
Hello, my name is Owen Howard, as you heard, I'm in Mr. Marty's fifth-grade class, and I really like CSaw, because it's like really easy to use. You can just log in really quick and hit the plus and just add a video or note or whatever. You could also see what, you could like watch videos of, like, never mind. We also use it sometimes for math at the end of our formative, we, they post links to CSaw so that we can easily just go in and talk about our math lesson in the day. We also, they also made some really awesome posts about our latest mini golf project for STEM. We created these many awesome mini golf courses, and there are lots of videos from there on there.
And it was really fun during that, because I would interview them, we did at the beginning during the planning process, and then, you know, ten, fifteen minutes in, and we were talking about what's going well, what are they changing, all the way through till their completed project. And it was, the parents were loving watching just how that learning unfolded, which made it really, really fun, so we love it.
Okay, so just, just to kind of wrap up here, hopefully that gives you a little window into what CSaw is and a little, a little idea about why it's such a great fit for our elementary schools, as well as just a little bit of a context about how it fits into our broader digital communication platform. So with that, any questions you have?
Yeah, I was just wondering, so what's the difference between using, why would we use this at the elementary level and not anywhere else at the higher levels?
I think it goes back to the thing I said about how teacher-driven it was. This really came from elementary teachers saying, this works for us. And I think there's a chance that a year from now or three years from now, I'll be sitting in front of you saying, hey, we're expanding this to middle school. My wife's a middle school teacher and she uses it. But in talking with middle school teachers, Luanne is very connected to the staff at Central and teaches a class there, they're really happy with the system that they've come up with to communicate with parents and feel that's effective at this time. So we'll just, that's something we'll kind of continue to monitor, but this time, we try to kind of follow the teacher's lead on what is a good fit for them.
Just as sort of a follow-up, because I know of having an elementary and a middle school, or now going to have a middle school and a high school, or the continuity between the different programs is wonderful, having to go back and forth between, because I just picked up my phone and looked at all the different apps that I've been asked by teachers to, some kind of Penguin thing, I can't remember the name, Class Dojo, Remind. So it's like I'm going to six different places to get the information. So continuity to me would, and I'm sure every parent feels the same way, when you have to log into three different things, and I know that, you know, Classlink is supposed to do that, but teachers are also asking you to download apps and everything else, and it, it becomes just mind-blowing after a while trying to keep up with it.
Yes. I think one of the most exciting and also challenging parts of our work is really thinking about, that thing I said about how do things improve as we go on? There's always going to be better tools out there that meet a specific need. And so for, we don't want to squash like new things that come out, because we've like got our White Bear system and we're not moving from that. But we also want to say, here's our hub, here's like, here's the main way that you can get information. So if you're going to be dialed into one thing, this is it, right here, what's up on this screen right now. And then all of that other stuff can become peripheral, and that's really our messaging moving forward. So it's not that teachers are going to stop using other digital tools, but those are still going to play a really key role in everything we do. But in terms of the key parent communication that you need to stay in touch with, you'll see that in these specific places.
Can I add one thing to that comment? We've also switched in the last year to things that go right to the parent, instead of the parent having to sign on to something to get information. And so with all of our digital tools that we're using right now for all grade levels, it comes to the parent, and they don't have to sign into Schoology for one thing and into all these different apps. It will be, come to you, and I think that's also a big benefit.
I just wanted to echo the ease of using CSaw. I've been a parent in the district for five years, and it has been extremely easy to use. I get email notifications when there's new things, and I think the other benefit is that I, my second grader is kind of spacey, and he never remembers what he does in school, ever. So I can go into CSaw and not only see what he's done, but also see firsthand how excellent the teaching is. You know, and, you know, I know how great the teachers are, but to see it and then to see him engaging in it has been really wonderful. So I have liked this the best of all of the different tools, so, thank you.
That's great to hear, and you are not alone in expressing that opinion.
Dr. Newmaster.
It does sound really fun, and it sounds like really very accessible. And I also went to the conference that you spoke, and I also went to the conference that Kim went to. One of the several things I went to was talking about security and access and privacy, and I know you just don't randomly add things to anything without vetting. But I'm wondering, who has access, what's the privacy and security, can outside people easily hack in? And the other thing is, who owns what's put on there? Who stores it, like, when it goes to the cloud? Is it like Google or Facebook where they own it?
No, in terms of, well, as a, just stepping back, when we look at new tools, one of the first things we look at is have they signed the Student Data Privacy Pledge, the Student Privacy Pledge? And as a basic platform, all of our main tools have done that, and CSaw is certainly among that group. Google for schools is different than your personal Google in that we still own that information. Like, Google doesn't retain ownership over that information. The same is true with CSaw. In terms of permission, Nick, do you want to talk a little bit about what that looks like from the teacher's perspective?
Yeah, well, one of the nice things about CSaw is that it is very closed off to just our families. We have different layers that we can set forth in terms of, if I send something to Owen's family, Owen's family is the only person in our class that can see it. I can send direct information to certain people, or I can send it to the entire class. So it gives us a little bit of control over what gets sent where. From a parent's point of view, I at least, or, and from our class, we sign in with our Google accounts, so it's not creating a new password or anything like that, so it's using what's kind of already in place. And in terms of parents, I know you had talked about how you could, you know, get email notifications. It's kind of nice, because the parents have the ability to kind of control the ways that they get things, and it's been really nice. There's, there's a lot of easy settings that I can even turn off that they can't see each other's stuff, which is, which is good.
That's really helpful. The term we use is kind of like a walled garden, that we can have things in there that are just for the families of those students, and you can just share things as broadly as you want, whether it's just to a single student or to the students of all your families.
So the students have, have rights to email everyone if the teacher gives it?
It's not really an email system, it's like, it's like, it's like a posting.
If they're going to share something they've done?
Yep, yep, yep. So they can post to our CSaw, it's kind of like a giant wall, and so they can post their learning there. But I can even set up layers that it has to be approved through me before it will go to that wall. So especially early in the year when we're learning about digital citizenship and how to comment and how to post, it will give me an alert as a teacher first, so I can view it, watch it, and then I can determine the kind of the level I want to push it out to.
I'm just thinking about some of our other tools, like Schoology, where you have to belong to a group, and the person that creates the information controls the group.
Yep, and these are called CSaw classes, so yes, it's set up, it would just be my fifth-grade class.
Do as a teacher, enter every member of whoever is in your family, so to speak.
Yep, we control, we send out to, specifically to families. So once we get Owen kind of in our system, there's a, an email or a letter that goes home specifically that links his family to Owen. Even when that family gets it, it comes through another step through me where I have to kind of connect to make sure it's the right family before it's even connected. So there's, there's multiple, but all the steps are easy to pull off, but yes, there are multiple layers to it.
Okay. Just wondering, thinking of as a former teacher too, how much would this be for the secondary who maybe has a hundred and eighty students, or three hundred, if it's an every other day? Thanks.
Okay, I think we're running behind tonight, we've got a number of different things on the agenda. I would suggest if any of us have further questions, to get ahold of Mark or Luanne or, or Nick, or, Nick, is it?
Yep, Nick, yeah.
Yep, or any of, any of the panel here. So appreciate it, we thank you very much and look forward to the rollout, so.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the Project Search update. Is that you, Kathleen, taking the lead?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for having us, Acting Chair Chapman, members of the school board, Dr. Kazmercheck. Tonight, we're going to just have a Project Search update, and just to, I'd like to start out by introducing Sarah Derby, Sarah as one of our Student Support Services supervisors, say that fast five times. And Sarah, among many of her responsibilities, oversees our Project Search. Project Search is a program for eighteen- to twenty-one-year-old students who are in their last year of transition services. And we have developed a nice partnership with several agencies to develop this, and Sarah's going to give us an update and kind of tell us how the first year with students went. We spent a year planning for the program, and now we're just finishing up our first year with our actual student group. So I don't want to steal any of her thunder, because she's got a good program going, so thank you, Sarah.
All right. Like Kathleen said, I just wanted to do a quick update, again, what Project Search is. And it's mainly a partnership that we have with the Jetlet Children's Specialty Healthcare in St. Paul. And it's a one-year school-to-work program for students that are eighteen- to twenty-one-year-olds with intellectual or developmental disabilities. And the students have to be selected through an application and interview process, and if they are selected, they go through three unpaid internships throughout the one school year where they're at Gillette. Again, they have to be eighteen- to twenty-one-year-olds, they have to be in their last year of school eligibility, so it could be their year following their senior year at South Campus, or it could be one of the three years that they're in a transition program like Transition Plus, but it has to be their last year of high school eligibility. They have to have a developmental or intellectual disability. They go through an application process, which is with their case manager, their parents and the students have to fill out a pretty extensive application process and get. and the students have to fill out a pretty extensive application process and get, and get letters of recommendation to show that they really have a desire to work and to be competitively employed. If after the application process they get selected, they go to an interview process and a skills day. And they're interviewed by a number of people that are part of our partnership, and then the skills day is at Gillette, where the departments that they would work in put them through like a mock workday, and they have to demonstrate their skills. This year, we had 15 students that we moved forward from the application process to the interview and skills day portion of, of our, of our selection process. So this here is our first class that we ever had. On the outside, we have Cheryl, who is our job coach, or our, we call it a skills trainer at Gillette. And on the far right, we have Emily, who is, they call them our instructor or our work coordinator. And then in between are our six students, and that was our first, first class at Gillette. We had six interns. So as you can see, we had one work coordinator, one para, and six students last year. Four of the students were from White Bear Lake, one of the students was from South Wash, and one from Roseville. And those students that are not White Bear Lake students either open and enroll into our district, or they come through the tuition billing process through the state, so we can receive funds that way. Next year, we will have one work coordinator, Emily will still be there, and then we will have two skills trainer, and next year, we're increasing our class, our interns, to eight. And we have three of those students from White Bear Lake, and the five of them will be from out of district that'll either be open enrolling, or going through the tuition billing process to, to work with us. Last year, we had eight rotations, and again, the students go through three of those rotations while they're there. And next year, we'll be adding an additional four or five more rotations. Something that's really exciting about our new rotations is that we have a couple of them there with asterisks that will be at different Gillette locations. So they will not be right at the Gillette Specialty Healthcare, they have multiple sites that they work from. So we're going to be able to take a shuttle, or we're going to be practicing public transportation kind of in addition to just working at the one location that we were at this year. And again, each of the students will be in three rotations to kind of have varied experiences while they're there. The partnerships are really big, and each of the students, like I said, has three rotations, and we have a mid-rotation meeting for each of them, and that's where the partners really get together. So at each of the mid-rotation meetings, we have somebody from Vocational Rehabilitation, Opportunity Services, their county caseworker, the Gillette department supervisor, and then the instructor is there, the job coach is there, and I'm at all of those meetings. And that's where we're really looking at how they're doing on their skills in that rotation, and if, what we can add to that rotation in the second part of their, in part of the rotation. By the time they're done with the rotation, they're supposed to be doing the complete job of somebody who's working at Gillette would be, would be doing. So we kind of scaffold the skills and kind of build on it throughout, throughout the rotation. Our students are graded on two main areas, which are performance on the job and attitude toward work. And those are the different things that they are graded on a scale of one to 10 by their Gillette department supervisors. Some of the biggest things that we've seen for growth are obviously that just skill development, a lot of problem-solving and communication skills, and being able to accept feedback, as well as just confidence and work stamina, lot of exposure to technology. Our students have been very proud about learning about Excel spreadsheets and how to enter data into spreadsheets. And of course, they leave with updated resumes, and after each rotation, they get letters of recommendation from their department supervisor that will go with them moving forward. Our next steps are graduation for our current class, and then after they graduate, they continue to work with Vocational Rehabilitation and Opportunity Services until they get competitive and paid employment. So we kind of leave them at graduation, and this team stays with them after graduation to help them get competitive and paid employment. And then we're starting the process for our new students, the, the second week of June, we'll be doing intake meetings and planning meetings with those families. Project Search sets outcomes, successful outcomes, and they're looking for within one year after completing the project, that students obtain competitive and paid employment in an integrated setting, where they're working 16 hours or more a week, and they're working at minimum wage or higher. So those are the, those are set by Project Search. So we will be tracking the data of the students of our first class now, next year. Again, there's 500 Project Search worldwide, and 75% of the students that have completed a Project Search have been able to gain competitive and integrated employment. In Minnesota, there's been 206 students that have completed Project Search, and 78% of them have had successful outcomes. Our own successful outcomes to date, even though they haven't graduated or finished the program yet, we have one of our students that we graduated early, because there was a, a posting that he applied for, and he was hired, so he is now working full-time at Gillette with benefits. And then we have another student who just this week accepted a full-time position at Gillette. The first student was in the Rehabilitation Therapy Department, which happened to be his first rotation of the year. The second student is in Environment of Care, it was also her first rotation, and they had a position that opened and she accepted. And right now, we're in talks for a third intern. They are looking at bringing a position back in the Respiratory Therapies Department, and they're really interested in having her, and it would be a part-time job at 20 hours a week. So, it's very exciting. Gillette has no obligation to hire the students, that's not part of the program. The part of the program for their partnership is to have them be on the, in the departments, gain these skills, and then they work with Vocational Rehabilitation and Opportunity Services to gain employment somewhere. We have just been really lucky that two of our students have gained full-time positions there, and we have a third that's pending, pending a position. Upcoming events, we will have a celebration, a graduation celebration at Gillette on June 5th from 11:30 to 12:30, where the, really the Gillette staff will get to celebrate the success of these young people. They have had a really, really great year, then they're really happy to have us there. And then on June 6th, we will have the actual graduation ceremony for all of our Transition Education Center students. So even though Project Search is at Gillette, they're an extension of our Transition Education Center, and we have our largest graduating class ever this year with 20, 20 graduates. And then these are just some of the photos of our interns. We have Amber here working in the HR department, we have Nathan in the supply chain, Jasmine is in the PICU, the Pediatric Intensive Care Unit, Youssef is in the guest services, Jordan is in Environment of Care, and Ben is in Rehabilitation Therapies. So I'm just going to leave you with the philosophy of Gillette, and say it was a really exciting year. We're excited to have eight interns next year, and our goal would be to have 10 interns the following year, which is kind of the maximum number for a Project Search, is 10, is 10 interns.
Any questions?
First off, not a question, thank you for rattling through that so quickly, wow. Hope you don't have a...
That's, that's Sarah's medium speech.
That was, that was so slow.
No oxygen deficit we have to worry about.
That isn't even her fastest.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just, Sarah, in the case where Gillette would not offer a position to one of the interns, is that, does the state caseworker step in at that point and place them?
So Vocational Rehabilitation and Opportunity Services work together to find them jobs. Opportunity Service actually provides job coaching and job searching, and they, they really become the school team after, after they graduate.
Anything else?
You did such a great job.
Oh, great.
We understand, thank you.
Did I get us back on track?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, in the interest of time, we have a couple of guests here from us, from PFM, I believe, and we'd like to go ahead and move, switch items four and five on the agenda. And so, we don't need a vote per se for that, do we? Okay.
Flexibility with that. We have a couple of guests here, so we thought we'd get them on the agenda now, so they could get on with their evening a little earlier.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Yes, thank you.
I'll start here, Acting Chair Chapman, Dr. Kazmercheck, members of the board. We're just going to talk tonight about our OPEB funds and a change in asset management that we're proposing. In 2008, the state allowed school districts to sell bonds equal to their post-employment benefit liabilities. And, and we invested those, $40 million the district sold in 2008, we invested those funds with Wells Fargo, and they've been invested with Wells Fargo ever since. This time, we're recommending a change, moving those funds from Wells Fargo to PFM Asset Management. And with us tonight, Don Hanson and Jason Palmer from PFM. We'll talk about their company and thoughts they have on, on managing those assets. So, welcome, Don and Jason, and I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm not sure we'll go as fast as the last presentation, but we'll, we'll do our best to try to get you back on, on schedule here, so, thank you again. We've had the privilege of, of working with White Bear Lake Schools, Dr. Kazmercheck and Tim and Tom back there on your general funds, but we're also looking at now the OPEB funds. And so I think, if we can, advance us to that point. So I, I brought with me, Jason Palmer, who's our, we call him our MACAM Specialist, Multi-Acid Class Management. And so Jason's going to kind of take us through some of the, the background information, of which Tim had shared some of it, and then as to what we might be looking at in the process, if you would, so.
Sure, thanks. Just as, as, as Tim talked about a few moments ago, just some of the background on the OPEB trust. Again, this is, again, a liability set aside to, money set aside to pay a liability for other post-employment benefits out into the future. About $40 million in OPEB bonds were issued about 10 years ago, and as, as Tim talked about, the monies have been invested in, in securities, mutual funds, stocks, and bonds since that time, again, to help earn a, a return in the portfolio over that, over the timeframe. In terms of just some information about the trust, we thought it'd be helpful just to give you some background. So there are about $30 million in assets in the, in the portfolio today. The discount rate, again, is, again, how we value those, that liability, we use about a 6% discount rate. In terms of how your portfolio is invested today, it's about 40% equities, 40% fixed income, and about 20% in alternative investments. And so I'm working with Tim and Tom and Wayne, and thinking about sort of the next phase for this particular portfolio, we have some key decisions to think about. So, one of them is, we want to maintain the, the, the current asset allocation. Does that make sense for where we're headed in terms of the, sort of the next phase for the OPEB trust portfolio? Then the second option is, again, what, what if we, what, what would things look like if we considered reducing some of the equity risk in the portfolio? And again, when you reduce equities in a portfolio, you help to mitigate, again, to try to reduce some of the risk in the overall portfolio over time. So those are the key, key decisions at this point. One of the things that we've, we've talked through with the gentleman here is just thinking about the, sort of the next phase, and thinking about what's the appropriate asset allocation going forward. Again, asset allocation is going to be the thing that helps to drive your long-term investment results. So looking at this page, again, so your portfolio is very similar to what we consider our 60/40 portfolio, so the column to the far right, that's very similar to your, your approach today, but the question is, what's the right asset mix going forward? How do we preserve the assets in the trust and retain the, the dollars that have been gained so far, but at the same time, make sure we're not exposing the portfolio to any additional risk? And so we're, we're weighing a couple of options right now, but so there's sort of a 20/80, again, model, so there's 20% equities, 80% fixed income, there's 30/70, and 40/60. So, again, we're weighing these options right now in terms of, sort of, what's the, the next phase right now? Because you don't want to get to a point where you reduce the equity, about equity risk so much in the portfolio that you'll need to put money in, in the future. So we want to make sure that we, we set the portfolio at the right amount. We think where we are today is probably a little bit aggressive, but we think going forward, perhaps a 40/60 or 30/70 approach would be more appropriate, again, to help maintain what you have today, and still have some growth in the portfolio for the future.
And just a kind of side commentary, of the various clients that we've worked with in Minnesota school districts, we've got some in each one of these columns, basically. And it's not a matter of there's a right answer and there's a wrong answer, it's about your risk tolerance, it's about your, your liability, and so on and so forth, and so, and, and we're not locked in at one spot for the entire time, we can move at any point in time. Obviously, we don't want to move on a quarterly basis, we look at it more on an annual basis, but it's something that we do look at, and we occasionally change the asset allocation mix based upon circumstances of that client that we're working with.
Yep, just in terms of our firm, looking at slide six here, so PFM, as Don talked about, we do have vast experience partnering with school districts across the country, and other types of public organizations, and managing their OPEB trust. So as, as a firm, we manage, we have about $11 billion under management, and so that means that, again, clients that have their assets invested similarly to how the trust is invested today, again, with a long-term focus. In terms of our resources, we currently manage about $3 billion in OPEB assets across the country, and do, we do partner with 15 school district OPEB clients here in Minnesota, and have been for, for a long time. In terms of our investment approach, one of the, couple of things to, to keep in mind is that we're going to be a proactive manager, we're not sort of a wait-and-see and sort of manager, but we want to make sure that we're managing the portfolio prudently, and using what we consider to be best-in-class investment managers from across the, from across the, the landscape. We believe that we have an independent perspective, and so we choose external managers to, again, have within the portfolio to manage the assets. And again, we've produced strong historical investment performance, so we kind of consider ourselves to be OPEB experts, so we, we understand the liability, we understand the program, we have the managers in place that we think can help, again, get to that next phase in your, in your program here.
We put a lot of emphasis on our fiduciary responsibilities, and, and because we are independent, we're not going to make a recommendation to you that we don't think is right, in, operating in your best interest. And that's why we do have the different models for different places, and, and we have all kinds of situations where we're, if we think it's prudent for you to at least consider possibly reducing your equity, we're going to tell you that, because that's our responsibility to do so.
We'll spend a ton of time here, but we thought we'd just show you some, some insights into the types of analysis that we do for our OPEB clients. Again, so just thinking about the, the long-term investment marketplace, again, we're looking a number of years out, 20, 30 years down the line, to think about what's the best asset mix for the portfolio. And again, some of the modeling things that helps you, helps all of our clients to really see, well, what happens if we reduce equities to 10%? And what happens in a worst-case scenario? What's going to happen to the trust? We think that that type of information is useful in, in terms of making a decision today. In terms of the, the tools that we'll be using to, to, to invest the portfolio, this is the, the type of structure that we'll have, you'll have access to what we consider, again, to be best-in-class investment managers. We thought it would be helpful not just to focus on the managers, but the role that they'll be fulfilling within each portfolio. So you can see the, the domestic equity managers, you can see the international, and the fixed income strategies as well. Again, we want to make sure that we're having a diversified portfolio. Again, asset allocation is going to be the, the primary driver of those long-term results, so we wanted to make sure that all of our clients are clear in, in terms of how those assets are invested going forward. In terms of our performance, it might be a little bit tough to see, but I think if you take a look at, again, as Don talked about, we have clients that have various asset allocation mixes, but the key takeaway here is that we've been able to add value really across the board, irrespective of the asset allocation. That's our job, is to add value for all of our clients, and we've, we have a, a long history of doing that. Again, I won't go through each one, but the bolded line items, again, that's the, that's sort of our returns for clients that have a similar asset allocation, whether it's 60/40 or 50/50. And again, the italicized numbers are the, the benchmark returns, and again, as I mentioned, we've got a history of outperforming our benchmarks. In terms of the investment expenses, this is our, our fee schedule. We just wanted to highlight, again, so the, the, the fees are what they are right here in front of you, but for the, the portfolio, which is at around $30 million, our fee would be about 34 basis points. You can see that in the, sort of in the footnotes at the bottom of the page here, so we just tried to sort of collapse the information again, it should add up to be about 34 basis points. In terms of a portfolio transition, just a couple of phases that we thought would be helpful to point out to you. So, up first would be approving the investment advisor agreement, second, working closely with the district staff to make sure that we've got that right asset allocation, that we've got the investment policy statement all nailed down. And then from there, phases sort of three and four, again, focus more on implementation, communication, transparency, making sure that everyone is aware of what's happening at all times. And then at the end of the, the transition, we'll come back, talk to the key individuals here, make sure that they, they're clear about the implementation process, what happened, how's everything looking today, things like that, we'll go back through questions, all with everyone. In terms of the, the transition, we think it can begin within four to six weeks of the approval of the investment advisor agreement, and we can go ahead and get things started from there. But with that, I'll stop, I just wanted to see if there's anything else that you want to add, Don or Tim, any questions anyone has at this point.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Back on nearly your opening slides, where you had the different portfolio asset mixes, and you said that the 60/40 was closest to what we currently have. Could you tell us what the various risk levels are with those different asset mixes? You know, slight, moderate, you know, that sort of thing?
Sure. So I think, you know, just, before we kind of... So I think, you know, just before we kind of look at the numbers, I think it'd be helpful to think about sort of a 60-40, right? So that's 60% equities, 40% fixed income. Again, the, the equities are going to be the growth driver of the portfolio, the bonds are going to be the buffer in case anything's sort of, if we need to have sort of a buffer in the portfolio. So I would consider a 60-40 portfolio to be a moderate risk portfolio. Anything beyond that, I would consider to be aggressive, so 65% equity, 70% equities. So what we're looking at is, again, 60-40 is where you are now, is sort of the starting point. 40-60, 30-70, we think would be less aggressive than where you are today. And then going down to a 20, 20-80 would be even, even more conservative. Happy to go through the numbers, but that's just sort of a big picture view of.
Oh, we know. And then, secondly, I don't know if you're willing to discuss this, but, and I didn't see the closing numbers for today's Dow, but given the inconsistency with our country's foreign policies, do you see international equities outperforming domestic equities? And would you be advising to increase those holdings in a portfolio? I mean, today was the first day, year-to-date, that we went positive on the Dow. I don't know if it, that was in late afternoon, I don't know if it held up to the close. But I mean, despite the high number, overvalued Dow numbers, I, I, I see a lot of turbulence forthcoming with domestic equities. I don't know if your firm agrees, I'm no expert, you are, but those are some concerns that I have.
Sure. I mean, I think, sort of big picture, again, that's why we have a diversified portfolio, right? So we're going to have some domestic equity, we're going to have some international equity, again, to help diversify. Again, when you, when you hear that word diversification, I would think, reducing the risk in the overall portfolio, kind of not putting all your eggs in one basket. And when you think about the, the global kind of concerns that, that you touched on, we're actually sort of overweight international equity relative to our, what we call our target allocation. So we, if you think about a portfolio that's 60-40, for example, I would say that we have, I would say roughly 42%, maybe, I'm just, again, off the top of my head right here, but about 40% in domestic equities, I would say about 20% in, in international equities. So there's, that's sort of our starting point. We're actually overweight equities in general, so both U.S. and international equities. We recognize that international, for the first time in a number of years, actually outperformed U.S. equities last year. So I think they were up maybe 25, 26% U.S. equities as measured by the S and P 500, or up about 22% or so. So that was the first time we saw that in a long time. The question I think you're getting at is, is will that trend continue? But I, I think the, the thing to think about is that, is the portfolio structured to take advantage of that? And we think that, we think that it is. Whether or not it's 1% or 2% higher than U.S. equities, we think that we've got a good, a solid structure in place to, to really benefit from that. What, whatever happens with, sort of the trade talk with China and Korea and you name it, outside of the U.S., we think that, we always want to make sure that we're structured to, to really benefit from that. Again, we're not day traders, so we're thinking.
Thank you for that.
Yes. On the record. So we want to make sure that we're thinking five, 10, 15 years down the line. And so again, that asset allocation is going to be the thing that helps get you there. I think the S and P 500 is up like two and a half percent this year. It's had a, it started out strong, up 7% in the first three weeks of the year. We had the equity correction, again, a lot of that had to do with some concerns about wage growth in the economy. But that's sort of a, it's kind of gone away for, to, to some extent, the Federal Reserve continuing to raise rates, companies are still making money hand over fist in the U.S. We see that all day long. But as long as companies are continuing to make money, we think that that's, that's going to be the primary driver of long-term stock returns. So until that issue is, until that's taken away, we think the market still has some legs to go, both in the U.S. and international equities as well. Is, are they more valued on the international side? Absolutely, we think so. So that's why we're a little bit more overweight there in portfolios. So sorry to be long-winded there, but.
If I may add, Jason obviously gets fired up when he starts talking about that type of stuff, and he's very good at it. But your questions are exactly why we're thinking that, you know, maybe you might want to, because your, your portfolio now is essentially in the far-right column, you're close to a 60-40 model right now. And we think it might be appropriate for you to consider getting a little bit less aggressive on the equity market. And so that's one of the things that we bring before you at that point in time.
Thank you.
Ms. Malloy?
That actually answered my first question, so thank you.
Okay.
I guess this would be for you, Tim. What's been the return on investment so far through Wells Fargo, and why the switch?
I couldn't tell you the return on investment. When we compared them, PFM has outperformed Wells Fargo in the past year. And so there's a, there's a few things, the fees are lower. I think philosophically, we match with them in terms of what our risk tolerance is. And I think Mr. Wilson referenced political climate, international climate, and the, the market's really been growing at a pretty rapid rate over the last several years, and we feel like there's a good chance there'll be a correction. Reducing that equity exposure is probably a pretty good idea. PFM also manages funds for the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus, which is where we keep our cash, and our, our cash flow goes through Midslaaf. And, and they've performed extremely well and are great communicators, and so that's an important part of, of our interest in moving toward them.
I guess that kind of answered my third question, was so we are anticipating more risk over the next few years, so that's why we're going more conservative?
Well, I can, if you, if I may, I have a couple of things to add to Tim's list. I don't, don't quote me on these, but I think generally, since inception, our portfolio has done about 6% or so. I could be off a little bit on that, but generally, over the same period of time, again, you've got to be careful about looking backwards, right? But I, I think generally, the PFM allocation, a similar allocation, we yielded a couple of percentage points higher than we've been. So we like the track record. A couple of other things, again, Tim mentioned philosophical, there's some philosophical differences with the conversations we've had, certainly with our, the representatives from PFM and our current, our current firm. The proactive manager-client relationship was mentioned, the school district focus is something we like. And quite honestly, corporate culture matters when we're dealing with the public's money, and that's a big issue for us. So we think that's an important talking point tonight, as we consider this. It's something that I've certainly had been thinking about when I was in my, in my previous role, and we've continued that conversation with, with Don and Jason here, and this is what's led us to tonight. Anyway, I have a couple other talking points as well, but, but basically, we feel more confident and more comfortable going forward. Number one, with, with the relationship, with the return that we can anticipate, and just simply, you know, this is, this is the public's money, and we need to safeguard it. And then we have some concerns about corporate culture, I think we need to act on that. Do we have a viable alternative? And I think there was another question I didn't answer, or someone didn't answer. Was there another point you, you didn't ask, somebody asked? Okay.
Other questions and comments?
I, I have a question. So would June 11th be the day that we would, we would bring the advisory agreement to the board, Tim? Is that for approval?
Well, that's what we're planning, Tim. We can have it ready by then.
So then, on the June 11th board meeting, there would be, the board would take action on this, on this investment advisory agreement. And then from there, it's, it's administrative work that we'll, we'll work with Don and Jason.
All right, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks. All right, and that brings us to, back to item number four on the agenda, the fiscal year 2019 preliminary budget. Mr. Wall?
Thank you. For those of us who are working through the budget approvals for the first time, and several members of the board, this is your first time through it, I'll just review that in May and June of, of last year, Dr. Kazmetschek brought the preliminary budget to the work session, and then the board approved that budget in June. During the summertime, the audit occurs from the previous year, and that audit sometimes guides us towards some adjustments that need to be made in the current year budget, the 2018-19 budget. In addition, we enrolled quite a few more students than we expected, and so we made some budget adjustments before school started. We brought those budget adjustments to the board in December, where you approved the adjusted budget. And so here we are in May and June again. Last week, we reviewed with the Executive Finance Committee, and Mr. Wilson and Mr. Chair, or Mr. Mullen were on that, with that group. We reviewed the preliminary budget, and, and now we're, we're presenting it to you. And Tom Wazork, our Director of Finance, has put it together, and he'll share what we have.
Good evening, Board, Chairman Chapman, Dr. Kazmetschek. Thank you for the opportunity to present this budget to you. And what can be more exciting than budget, right? Okay. Right.
Do you want them to list things? That would be more exciting than budget?
I hope not. Okay, going into the, the budget, there are some basic assumptions that we're using to develop the budget. And I will say that from the budget that we presented last fall, there was a projected budget for FY19 and beyond. So basically, I've taken the FY19 that was previously projected and inserted some additional assumptions to make sure we have a good budget going forward. So some of those assumptions are that the general edu, the general fund is made up on student, state aid by, by student. So for this year coming up, we are using 8,847 students. And then projecting to the future, where by the time we get to FY22, that projection will be up to about 9,000 students. Now, that's conservative, because in the last, last year, we, we grew 300 kids. So, so the revenue side of things is going to be a conservative budget. Then the formula allowance, currently it's at, or for next year, it's at 6,312 for a, an elementary student, and for a secondary student, it would be weighted at 1.2 or $7,574. We're also projecting, in the future, that the formula allowance would grow by 1%. The, right now, it's in statute that last year, or current year, and next year, it's growing by 2%, and they were using a, a growth factor of 1% beyond that. There was a possibility of us getting additional money this, this next year. I'm not sure where that is in the, in the, in the bill that was passed.
We correctly did not build any of that into this budget.
Okay.
Yeah. There may be some additional school safety money.
School safety money on the, on the LTFM side.
So it was, yeah, we did not count on any additional funds.
Yep. Also built into the budget is we are factoring in 2% salary and benefit increases. And as you'll see in our, our budget is basically about 80% salaries and benefits. And then we factored in 1% growth in services, supplies, and other expenses. Some budget adjustments that we are, I'm bringing forth, we have a one-time, this hopefully is going to happen this summer, it's going to, the proposals are going to be received, I think, here in a couple of weeks. We're projecting, though, that a new phone system would cost about $350,000. The current phone system goes back to, what, Windows Vista or something like that?
And then when he asks, is it 93 or 96?
Yeah, yeah.
You've got to run.
So, and it's currently, the tech department has had to piecemeal it together if it, if it fail, if it breaks down. So far, it hasn't failed beyond repair yet. So, but it's, this is going to hopefully take, this will take care of that problem. We're projecting an increase in activities of $80,000. And that is to help get us, our activity expenditures up to, closer with our peers in our area. We're on the lower side of how much we're spending on activities, and, for example, we're going to take care of helmet repair instead of having the students have to fundraise it. That'd be one, one, one item. We're looking at, because of our growth, last fall, we did a $75,000 increase for additional Chromebooks. We're also going to extend that going forward, because we think we're going to, or the way we're growing, we're going to need to buy more Chromebooks for the students we don't have yet. So this would be a $75,000 increase for additional hardware for new students. And then in the personnel area, we're projecting 3.75 additional FTEs in the elementary secondary, 5.65 teachers in special ed, and 4.5 paras, FTEs in paras in special ed. So that in a nutshell is the assumptions that went into building the general fund.
Just regarding the Chromebooks, this year, we enrolled quite a few more students than we expected, and so our tech department was in a tight spot, about $75,000 short in, in what they needed to purchase additional Chromebooks. And so we just wanted to plan for that this year, so we were ready if that, if that occurs.
For the Nutrition Services Fund, we are projecting no lunch price increase, and they are showing a deficit in their fund, but in current-year expenditures, reduced to some capital expenditures we're making within that fund that can, legally can come out of food service. Food service funds have to be spent on food service operations. So we cannot, even though if food service would have a million-dollar fund balance, there's no way, it has to be spent on food service, it can never come back to the general fund or another fund. The Community Service Fund is projecting a, also a deficit of about $267,000. But there again, we are projecting a very conservative revenue adjustment, and in the past, they've had a deficit budget when it's come to the board for this meeting, but in the end, they've, they've actually had, added to their fund balance over the last couple of years. But to contribute to that deficit, three additional staff members are, are being added to the Community Services Fund, and that is to help meet the needs for extended day in a couple of locations. So if you would go then to the next page, and I know it, I hope it's easier to read on your, on your screens, but I would like to highlight a, a couple of lines on the general fund, it'd be line 29, and that is showing that for preliminary, for FY19, that we are, we're projecting a negative balance, or negative budget of $271,000. We can keep in mind that we're, I'm assuming, I think we have a conservative revenue budget. So if we have, if we get 300 kids additional this year, this next year, this will be on the positive side in a big hurry. Then line 53 just shows that we are using some of our reserves to balance our budget, and this is an audit requirement that they, we show that we're using our resources that we have currently to cover any deficits. And then line 60, which is showing the, the effect of our budgets on the unassigned fund balance. And we have a board policy to keep the unassigned fund balance at about 12 and a half percent. And you can see going, going across, we will be maintaining the fund balance as per board And then on line 63 through 69 is the Food Service Fund, or Nutrition Services Fund. Their fund balance is projected to go down about $37,000, which is because of those capital expenditures. And the Community Services Fund has a deficit of $267,000, but that's all because of those, a very conservative revenue budget and those three additional positions. Either way, the Nutrition Services budget, or fund balance, and the Community Services budget, or fund balance are very, very good shape and can sustain those deficits going forward, but not in the long term. So somewhere along the line, they'll have to, will have to decide whether additional fees or something else has to happen for those two funds. The balancer pages are, are a, just some more, a little bit more detail on program areas with salaries, benefits, salaries and benefits, purchase services, but they all tie back to this page, which is the, the main summary. purchase services. But they all tie back to this page, which is the main summary. So, with that, do you have any questions or comments?
Ms. Ellison.
I have two questions.
Yep.
One, I'm looking at the summary page and looking at general fund and revenue. Line six, what does "other" stand for?
Oh, it'd be, one of the items would be like fees collected for activity fees and that kind of thing. So, it's, it's, it's other revenue that is not either state aid, federal aid, or levy. So, it'd be, it's kind of just a concomeration of everything that's other than that.
Is that difficult to predict?
Pardon?
Is that difficult to predict?
Not usually, but it's, because our sources are fairly steady.
Okay. Good, thank you. And then my other question is, do you have a sense of how the legislative session may impact the district? I know that the legislature only approved a $15 million extra funding for districts instead of, the governor was asking 130 million. But I don't know all of the details of what might come out of that session that would impact us. Do you have a sense of?
I can answer that, Tom. I have, I have a bit of a sense. We haven't gotten all the detail yet. So, we do not assume during, during a session, we don't typically assume that we receive anything unless, unless we're far enough along. And it's a, like next year, for example, they'll be talking about, it'll be a budget year. This wasn't a budget year, this was supplemental. So, we did not build anything in thinking that, hey, if Governor Dayton were to get this, this funding, if he were to get that through, that'd be great. We would, we would then make, we would maybe make an adjustment between, between now and June 11th when you, when we act on the, on the budget. But generally, this, this funding is, it allows districts to do things like not set aside other funds that you typically are required to. So, for example, 2% staff development set aside is waived. So, then you can use it for school safety. So, things like that, that we may or may not do, it certainly doesn't increase our, wouldn't increase our revenue, but it would allow us more flexibility with the revenue that we do receive. So, there's some of that in this, in the bill that was passed. But in terms of, in terms of new dollars, there will be, there will be some, but not a significant enough amount to have a huge impact on our bottom line.
Do we set aside 2% for staff development?
2% of the, of our general revenue is what our, is what our staff development budget is built on. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Maybe I offer just a little bit more context, just having a historical perspective on a couple of these line items. So, line, line 53, Tom pointed out, if we, if we factor in some of the fund balance that would offset, like for example, if we go up to line 42, student transportation vehicles, 130,000, we've actually built in a little bit more than that up above to cover, cover new equipment. So, we may typically, we may then add that to, how are we, how are we paying for these buses? Well, it'd be a one-time expenditure that we would use fund balance for. That would be an appropriate usage. So, when you factor all that in, that's the net change in fund balance, line 53. So, so yes, just straight revenue expenditures. We have, looking at a deficit of 271,000. But when we factor in the other sources, we're, we're in the black for the, for the year. And then, again, just some historical perspective, our, our fund balance policy is 12 and 1/2 to 16.7%. That's the range. And so, as you look forward, we're, we're pretty well within that range, even just about in the out year. But the out year, three years out, it's, that's pretty far out when you're talking about the school district budget. So, and then, just a couple more comments. The Nutrition Services Budget, we're projecting a deficit of 37,000. That's fairly typical at this time of year. And then ultimately, they, they typically end up in the black. That's typically what happens. Same goes for Community Services. So, if you look at line 76, under the revised 2018, we have, we're projecting a deficit of 151,000. They're actually likely to come in positive for the current year. So, again, I just, I would caution you to not be overly concerned about the projection at this point. Preliminary budgets are conservative. And we have, we have shown, especially in the Nutrition Services and Community Services, that those budgets typically run in the black when it's all said and done. So.
Ms. Lloyd.
I have a bizarrely specific question. So, I know the high school south campus charges to park. Does that go into the separate school budget, the money they make from that?
On the revenue side, it would be part of that, of the, that other category. But it may be, it, I believe it is allocated into the, that building's budget to offset some of the expenses that go along with that.
We have expenses in the, for the parking lot. We have monitors. And so, there are some expenses. So, that goes to offset that.
Like I said, it was a bizarrely specific question.
Okay, I have a question of my own. Online, let's see, this is the combined statement here for General Nutrition and Community Services. Online, let's see, what is that? It's under Community Services. I guess the revenue projected for 2019. Maybe you already expanded or mentioned this. And if so, I apologize. But I see quite a jump in revenue of about $5 million. What would account for that?
Five hundred thousand. Right.
Oh, you're right. 500. Okay, my, okay, well, forget that.
That would have been pretty.
Yeah.
That'd be extraordinary.
Yeah, the whole thing is 5 million. Sorry about that.
All right, Kim, I've been there many times.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And next up is the facilities update. Is that you, Mr. Walt?
Yes, it is.
White Bear Sports Center Agreement.
Yes, and I welcome our Activities Director, Brian Peliquin. We shared with you in February that we were looking to move our girls' hockey program from the Vanna Sports Center to the White Bear Lake Sports Center. Oh, and Coach Jerry Popick is with us too. From the White, Vanna Sports Center to the White Bear Sports Center. And we began those conversations in February. We wanted to make sure the board was on the front end of those discussions. And we've advanced those discussions. We, we have more information to share with you today. So, I'll invite Brian Peliquin to, oh, go, go down further. Keep going. Maybe it's not on there. Let's go back. Go back, go back. Okay, well, we'll go without the, without the slides then. I think the slides are in your packet.
Do you have the draw?
Here, I'll pull it up here.
I got it too on my phone.
Do you have those slides?
Yes.
Perfect, good. So, we're all looking at the same thing on our devices. So, it's just, just an update with our procedure. We've had several conversations with the city of White Bear. And are in the final stages of coming to a verbal agreement and looking towards just putting it into words and putting it into a document and actually getting the agreement signed. We are very pleased with the results and with what the city of White Bear is willing to offer us regarding having a designated locker room area for our athletes, not only during the season, but also in the off-season, having a designated coach's office, not only during the season, but in the off-season, and then having storage. It is kind of the three main things that were a non-financial piece with that. Estimated use for pay, the ice time at $190 an hour, when we're estimating based off of previous year's ice time, is about $19,380. There's a little bit more cost involved with game days just for workers, Zamboni drivers, and also ice time built into that. And so, they charge, their, their dollar is 1,037 and 50 cents. We've got 10 home games this year. So, that's going to be $10,375. And then, there is a monthly lease. And essentially, what the monthly lease goes to is, is it goes to all of those bullet points that were in the first slide regarding basically leasing the coach's office, the locker rooms. And that way, we've got our own space and our, and not having to share that. And that was important to us, to be able to have both our coaches and our athletes have their own space and, and not be sharing it with, with the other local organizations. So, the total estimated value is $41,755 for that. And obviously, some things might change within there regarding ice time. And hopefully, depending on how far we advance in the playoffs, obviously, we'll be paying more, which will be a good thing. And then, the final slide is just some pictures of, of the updates. And they're, they're in the works right now with a plan to have it completed, well in time for the start of our high school girls' hockey season.
So, we reviewed this, this topic with the Executive Finance Committee last week as well. And these are the terms of the agreement. We don't have a written contract yet. But we've come, in the last week, we've come to agreement with the terms. Any questions?
So, it's the White Bear Hockey Association, the White Bear Lake School System, and White Bear Lake, they're all putting in funds. Has the city of Hugo been approached for funds?
Well, I don't, I don't know if they have or not. We're, we're simply a leasur in the, in this arrangement with the city of White Bear Lake. And so, the investment for the enhancements to the White Bear Sports Center came from the White Bear Hockey Association and the city of White Bear Lake. And they would like to see us as involved as we, as we're willing to get in, in the White Bear Sports Center. There may be an opportunity for that as we get involved with our facilities, planning. Activities will be an important part of that because we know that there's a lot of need for improved activity spaces in our district. And so, it may be that there's an opportunity for us to, you know, look at that facility and get more involved with that facility in the future.
If you'll forgive me, I don't know much about hockey. So, if this sounds like an ignorant question, I apologize. That sounds like a lot of money. How much does it cost the kids to participate?
What the fee is for hockey?
School fee is 250.
I'd say 250 is a school fee, but there are other costs.
And we have a booster club as well. It's, it's a $500 fee for each player.
The booster club?
Is not, it's, it's part of the, of the team, if you will, its own entity. And so, it's things like the equipment needs for the kids, pucks, game jerseys, that type of thing. Because our budget, I think last year was $800, I think, for the whole team. You really can buy about six pucks for that, so.
And that's 250 for the boys' team and the girls' team?
I know it's the girls'. I'm not sure about the boys'. I think it's the same.
It's the same?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Okay. Are there any, and maybe this is a question in general for the sports in White Bear schools. Are there scholarships available to help kids who maybe not, would not be able to pay the fee?
Currently, all of our students who are on free and reduced lunch get that fee waived. And for those that are not on free and reduced lunch, there are two scholarship funds that get funds put into them every year and allocated that run through our office and then inevitably up to the district office for students. And typically, to help spread that wealth out, we, we cut that cost in half. And so, we ask the parents to pay half. We've also created payment plans with parents who say, you know, they aren't for introduced lunch, but it's a struggle. We don't, we don't want a scholarship, but can, can we pay it in $50 recommends over the course of this, of a season? So, we're doing everything we can to try to get as many kids involved as humanly possible.
The Ed Foundation had two donors step forward a number of years ago. The Palm Memorial Fund is a fund invested through the Ed Foundation for the full purpose of full participation in activities. And so, when a student may be able to pay a fee, hockey's our, is our highest tier. We have a tiered system for activities fees. Hockey is highest. Sports in which, or activities in which there's a greater investment in the, in the district are at the highest tier. Oftentimes, some sports are a little more efficient. We have large numbers of students and we can have the tiers, the fees be a little bit lower. But Palm Memorial and the HANSAP support full participation activities. It might be a student who is getting their fee waived, needs basketball shoes, and, and they can get support from Palm Fund or the HANSAP Fund for, you know, for equipment.
Yeah, both of those funds go greater than the registration fee. You know, hockey's an expensive sport. Football's an expensive sport. And so, those funds can be used to help with purchasing equipment, paying player fees, and things of that nature.
And we advertise those opportunities in our newsletters. So, the, you know, parents see that those funds are available.
I'm just adding, add a couple of things. So, our fees are generally pretty low compared to other, other districts.
Yes.
We went through a, two, three years ago, review of the fees. And that's when we, that's when we added the free and reduced to be free, not just the free, but actually the free and reduced. And then, earlier, Tom and Tim mentioned the $80,000 increase to our activities budget, in part because we are trying to offset some of what teams are expected to raise to pay for some basics. So, the example of the helmet refurbishing was used for football. That's something that the district should take upon itself to do. And that then lowers the need for, for families to contribute towards that. And so, that's probably something we'll see over the course of the next few years as we, we try to get more in the mid-range as to the, the district's support of, of student activities.
Thank you.
So, are we still talking about the expansion for the boys to come to the same, do a separate sheet of ice for the, for the boys' team as well?
That's a great question. I mentioned earlier that the Hockey Association and the city of White Bear Lake have visions for the White Bear Sports Center being bigger and greater than it is, even with the, with the new design. I think they'd like to see a second sheet of ice there, a second sheet that would have a greater seating capacity. And that might be an opportunity for us at some point to include as part of our facilities planning. That might be an opportunity for us to be a player in that. We'll have to decide if that's where, you know, something that's important to us. But there could be opportunity there.
Yeah, they've got two, they've got two phases in their plans. And we aren't a part of Phase 1 at all. We are just simply leasing the newly renovated sports center. But everything they're doing right now with Phase 1 is leading to make Phase 2 easy. Their coolant system, they're putting in a coolant system that's set up to be able to handle two sheets of ice. They've got the Lands Place available. They've got it plotted out already. It's just a matter of dollars and the cost to build it. And so, down the road, that may be an opportunity.
This is a completely personal observation. I mean, neither of my boys play hockey and that's fine. But I know so many hockey families and White Bear Lake is thought of as a hockey place. And yet, we don't have the facilities for it. So, I always find that very interesting. So, just a personal observation.
Thank you. They have two sheets now. Granted, one has barely any seating, but, so what are they doing there? As you keep mentioning two sheets of ice.
At the same place.
Never mind.
No.
I'm thinking Vadness.
Vadness, right. I was like, wow, where is the other one? I haven't been there many times, but they showed me the back one.
Any other questions, comments? I have one. And that is, and you may have touched on it, how does the fee structure compare to what they're paying now? That would be involved here.
I, I, I knew the question was going to be asked. So, I specifically looked at one specific number. We are estimating our ice time, just looking at ice time alone, which is the largest expense of the entire lease. Our ice time next year, we are predicting to be right around 19,000. I looked back at our invoices from Ramsey County for this year for the girls alone, and it was about 27. So, and there, we're hoping to set up some profit sharing as well with them regarding to ticket sales, which we haven't necessarily had as directly in the past. So, I think it will be good, both financially and logistically.
So, the terms of our agreement on gate receipts is the first $900 will go directly to offset lease. So, it'll be applied to our lease. And then, beyond $900 in ticket sales, we'll split those evenly with, with the city of White Bear Lake. And that's a pretty typical arrangement. We feel like that's fair.
How many seats are there?
I think the new ones are going to be between 600 and 700 seating. It's going to expand along the entire length of the rink. Right now, it's between the blue line and blue line, basically. So, it's limited.
Okay. I don't see any other hands raised. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
And then, we're on to the comprehensive facilities update. Mr. Wald, I would guess that's you also.
This will be brief, just a quick update. Last month, I presented to you a bit about the scope of the work, that we're really looking at comprehensive facility study. Two important studies that we'll be doing on the front end will be educational adequacy, how do our current facilities meet the demands of instruction in White Bear Lake? And as we look at our strategic plan and as we propel that plan forward, will our facilities be able to handle it? And so, that'll be a study that our facilitators will be working with us on. The second part will then be looking at the bones of the building, HVAC, engineering, plumbing, electrical, and getting a sense of really drilling down to the nitty-gritty of what needs to be done. So, when we begin to work through a plan, we've got really two issues to figure out. One is, what do we want for our classrooms, to be as functional as possible and to be as useful to us and efficient as possible? And then, secondly, how can we make sure our buildings last us a good long time so that we're not continually upgrading our buildings and putting a lot of money there? We'll be, the committee that we'll be working with, we don't know the size of it yet, we'll develop that plan soon, but that will involve broad stakeholders from our community and students, we expect to be a part of that, parents, and then a variety of stakeholders at the table. We want to make sure that the buildings that we design or that we renovate meet the needs of the broader community. Finally, last time I presented to you, I told you that we were interviewing four firms to decide who would be our team to facilitate the community engagement process, and we interviewed four outstanding firms, we liked all four of them, and we settled on Wald Architects and Engineers. Paul Applikowski is the senior that will be working with us. We felt like Wald had a history of working with districts who had buildings about the age of our buildings, districts about the size of our district, and were able to do some really great things in those buildings. And so, we felt comfortable with Wald. They recently led Mounds View through a referendum process, and Roseville, and so, we feel pretty confident in them. We'll be meeting with them May 30th to put a more concrete plan. But our draft timeline, this is how we would envision it working, I think the board might appreciate getting a sense of how this process will go. So, beginning in September, the facility committee will begin to meet. There will be work done before that. We hope that the educational adequacy report is completed, the facilities reports are completed, our demographic study will be completed, and so, we'll be able to bring those reports to the committee, so they'll have a good sense of where are we today, and that committee will determine where we want to be. That will be most of next year, we would envision that taking about a year to get through that process, and to make sure that we provide good opportunity for community members to engage to whatever degree they would like to, and that we're communicating with them along the way. I suspect we'll have many updates to the board, but for sure, by the end of that engagement process, we would be doing a significant report to the board. We'd be looking at board approval for the plan in November of 2019. November to January would be submitting the plan to Minnesota Department of Education for review and comment. They need to see the plan and spend about 60 days looking at it to determine, they need to approve it. And so, if they approve the plan, then we'd be looking at a February 2020 date for a potential bond referendum, if that's where we decide to do it. That could be sped up as early as November of 2019, but we feel like the breadth of this project might require us to move it back a little bit. It could also be as late as April of 2020. February, delaying or having that board approval in, or bond referendum, excuse me, in February of 2020 would allow us to get shovels in the dirt that summer. April probably wouldn't. And so, depends on how quickly we feel we need to move. What we certainly want to do is move at a pace that we can bring our community along in that when we bring a plan to the school board, you feel really confident in the work that's been done. Any questions?
All right, you covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we are on to item number seven, follow-up to IB vote moving forward. Ms. Paul?
All right. Mr. Chapman, Dr. Kavna-Chap, members of the board. You have two documents that you had a chance to review, and appreciate the request for you asking for just a framework or a timeframe for kind of how this process was going to move forward. Again, with a focus on informing and involving parents, involving staff in a process. First, I'll talk a little bit about the middle school programming. The document laid out helps look at a process for transitioning from an authorized IB school to a model that leverages best practices from IB and is aligned with our pre-K through 12 academic design. And it includes what I'm going to refer to as a phase one, so a timeline for the 2018-19 school year. That just shares some of the meetings and presentations and other means of communications that have and will be taking place to make sure we are engaging all of our stakeholders. So, with that, do you have any questions about the timeline that has been shared with you regarding NYPD or our middle school programming transition?
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. I have a question, looking at page two in August, PTO engagement. I'm still learning about the structure of the parent organizations at the middle schools. Do they have PTOs similar to the elementary schools? Or is this PTO engagement at the elementary level moving upward?
I'd say both and. Our middle school principals have been working to try to really broaden engagement in their parent-teacher organization structure, but as far as the intentional kind of mapping out connections with parents, those begin in August through that formal structure or other ways in which parents will be updated and involved.
But it will be the elementary's as well as the middle schools?
Yeah, because middle school design will, we want to make sure people are aware of what they're going to be looking ahead to. I have had the opportunity to send several emails to the Matoska parents that specifically had reached out to me in the process and have asked to connect on some conversations in terms of the work ahead and moving forward, and so, that will be taking place right now in the next couple of weeks. I've had a couple of calls scheduled for this week, but that will be a big part of both making sure we have clarity on what's happening at Matoska, but also, what is that conversation for our middle schools and the questions that they have and clarifying questions that they may need answered.
I've got another question. So, the strategic thinking trainings with Bill Cook, and so, he was the one that helped with the strategic plan creation, is that correct? And so, it looks like in June, it'll be the district and building leaders, and then in August, it will also include the teachers?
There's a, and Dr. Kavna-Chap, feel free to add on to this, but the context of understanding the strategic plan, there's two levels of engagement with Dr. Cook. And so, the first one happens through this process of mutual commitments in June, and then the follow-up is on strategic thinking in which every principal will also have an internal facilitator identified that will be part of that training. And then, following that, we do our data retreat in which all buildings bring a team of people in order to put together the action plan for the year, and so, all of that will be connected.
Would it be possible and/or appropriate for board members to attend those trainings, or is that not something that's an appropriate role for us?
The strategic thinking would be on August 13th would be something you definitely, if you can make it work, yeah, that'd be great. The others are more staff-level discussions about actual, you know, actually doing the work, but that would be a big-picture overview by Dr. Cook that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Just email Jody, let her know you're interested.
Okay.
On August 13th. Any of you, if you're interested.
Anything else? Ms. Freehy?
Just a comment, too, sir. I see that you have May 21st for the NYPD, you have the curriculum leaders meeting. That's normally in middle school, the curriculum leaders would be involved in moving the strategic plan forward also, because you'd set certain department goals, et cetera, and then you'd have your building site plan where staff would be writing goals also for, which would be based on the strategic plan. So, in terms of kind of the chain of command, having the curriculum leaders involved in May, in terms of looking forward, is an important step in this.
Thank you, Ms. Paul.
Thank you.
And I guess we are down to the last item on the agenda, if I'm making sure I got everything up to that point, which would be the negotiation study session going into closed session, and I believe we have to take, oh, yeah, have a motion and a vote on that. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Okay, and is there a second?
We're not adjourning, we're moving to closed session.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll refine my motion. Mr. Chair, I move to.
Recede.
Move, okay, recess to move to closed session.
And is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and then we vote.
Voice vote.
Voice vote.
Voice vote.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we are recessed to closed session.